Let's get this thing going.
We're compensating for the last time.
Yeah, with the bellowing voice as opposed to the silence. Okay, well, welcome, everybody. We will jump right into this. And item number one on the work session is Resolution 2023-31, appointing an individual to serve as the street superintendent for the city. So I just wanted to get your input on this. I mean, obviously, Corbett would be someone that we would consider, but it does allow for it to be a member of City Council. So Ben, you and I spoke a little bit about the possibility of it being you, too. So.
What is the duty of?
Well.
I just wanted to make sure that I was aware what's different than what.
Public Works.
Yeah, because I was just assuming it was under Public Works. But you said, oh, it could be Corbett. So then that threw me off.
Right, and it was a good catch on Jody's part because we are obliged to have it, but we don't have it. And so it's something that we're just kind of filling in a hole that we had left unfilled. So the duties administer the public streets in the city, maintain all public streets and walks, control all signs and structures. On public streets, exercise control over the construction of public streets and place such signs, pavement markings, and other traffic control devices, which conform to the manual on uniform traffic control devices, et cetera, et cetera. So I would welcome any input. Otherwise, I might just.
I'd love to hear Corbett's thoughts.
I think it'd be better to have it be Corbett.
I do, too. I could see where it could be beneficial to have Public Works Director over it and then have a council assignment to be the liaison and help because we don't really have anyone else. And we have a lot of Public Works issues, so.
Right, well.
It might be just that, hey, we need some signs. Can you go order them? Or we need somebody to oversee something else, you know, under the direction of.
And no mistake, and Corbett is already fulfilling this role. So I mean, it's just if we keep Corbett in that role, it's just giving him another title. But again, this is why I thought maybe it merits some discussion that if. Because Rhodes, I mean, like, we're working with Ted. Sorry, Doral.
No, go ahead.
So we're working with Ted in trying to develop an asset management plan that would give us something to, basically, that transcends elections and allows us to have a plan that we can follow every year that won't be disrupted by whoever happens to be sitting in this chair, any of these chairs. So that's what we're aiming for here. So in this case, I would say that the superintendent would want to be involved in that exercise for sure. So anyway, Doral, we were saying.
Well, a superintendent would do something like someone did, and I assume it was Corbett, when they brought in that maintenance presentation to us that was really well done, very informative, you know. Was that Corbett that arranged for that? See, that was really positive. So he's a natural, but I thought of Ben as well as another choice if that were something he wanted to do. But yeah, that was good, and that was a superintendent duty, in my view.
Thank you.
Back then.
So superintendent, this duty still would fall under Public Works Director, right?
Yeah.
Whether it was him or someone else, he's ultimately still, you know, the director of.
Yeah, no, it's just a way to share the load.
And it's part of, you said, part of the asset management plan that we're just going through and trying to see if we're missing anything.
We're developing.
Yes, developing.
Well, we're missing something. It's the asset management plan.
We're missing, we have holes, places that we can, as we develop this asset management plan, we will fill the holes along the way.
Yeah, yeah, that's the idea. And I think that that will address, I mean, you know, even in terms of how we prioritize Rhodes' projects, you know, we won't be able to give every resident what they're looking for in terms of timing, but at least we can say, okay, well, here you are. You know, you might be ten down on the list, but you're on the list.
So would this person then be the liaison? What we currently have is the council liaison to the Public Works Committee as well as then.
Which Ben is already on.
Right, that's what I'm trying to make the tie here is there still would be under the director, but the liaison with the Public Works Committee, because we have all this public work stuff floating around. And I just wanted to make sure that we clarify.
Let's. So I have more of a life philosophy than anything else that I follow when it comes to my financial managers and so forth, is you need to be able to fire them. In other words, I don't use family members because you can't fire a family member. I don't. So my concern here is if we were to have a council member be that, you can't fire them because they're a council member. They're elected office. That's different. I think.
Well, it is appointed by me, so technically I could.
Yeah.
It would be messy.
It would be super awkward and messy and whatever. So, and again, I'm not saying that we want to take that approach with Corbett either. Please understand I'm not. But I'm just saying, I think we need to be very careful mixing these positions with council members too much because council members are elected. They can be fired by the public, but not by us. There might be impeachment clauses or whatever, but I'm just saying that's.
Only with criminal, only with criminal activity.
Right, so I'm just saying, I think we really want to be careful there.
Good point. Okay. Jody, yes?
When you're doing this, think about that there's also other references to the street superintendent in the code. So when you're appointing, for instance, a council member, then you're asking them to fill other duties that are specified in the code that the street superintendent's supposed to be doing.
And that is one reason why it would be ideally suited for Corbett, but Corbett is stretched thin. That's the thing that I'm trying to balance here. So, I mean, we can just, if agreeable, we can ask Corbett to do it.
That's kind of what you were saying when you first asked him. Is are you okay with doing it? And.
I can tell you a little bit about what I've done in the sense of, as per we've talked, right? And we've had a few complaints come in about certain roads in the city, right? We've talked about, you know, trying to get things moving. So I would say as my role as liaison between Public Works over Rhodes, right, just as David is Public Works over Water, you know, I would still be able to facilitate or help Corbett, right? So if he's superintendent, great, I'd still probably do the same things I do, right? And so if it's code and things like Jody was saying, great, right? I'm still going to help Corbett because I'm a masochist. So what Mark and I did today is we drove every street in the city. We created this map here. It's going to be seen there. So this is kind of every little spot that we could quickly identify in the city that has issues around a quick patch solution. And so then I went down and we wrote all of them down with their square footage. So I'm going to run the numbers and find out per our conversations around what would it potentially look like from a cost standpoint within the budgets that Corbett has for Public Works, for Rhodes, and to see if this is something that could be achieved pre, at least in some regard, because we also put a prioritization around them.
Great.
Around how far would the money go, what would make the most sense, and then making us ready for the snowplow season. So I'd say if we want Corbett to be the street superintendent, her especially, what Jody was saying, I think that's the right idea. I like David's idea as well. It makes it just a little bit cleaner to have us have a little bit of separation from staff responsibilities, if that's what the superintendent is entitled to do. And then I would say as all of us in our liaison capacities help and assist, then that's what we do.
Great, okay. And thank you, that's awesome. Thank you for doing that, too.
It was a lot of fun. Mark and I had a great chat.
Okay, well, then, assuming Corbett is willing to accept this title of what he's already doing, then I think that.
Were you hoping that we took more away from you or are you okay for us to leave it as is?
Not a favor.
No, you do this, you're right.
I do think that, I mean, it's going to beg the question because we did lose Craig, and Craig was doing some of the road work. He also is fulfilling other roles. And I realize that we're trying to replace Craig by committee. My own personal feeling is that's not going to last. And so we might need to address that at some point fairly soon.
I think we need to hire. Boy, that's my opinion. We need to hire somebody.
Where do you feel that there is missing pieces? I mean, Wayne is doing, I think, an exceptional job at code enforcement, and I'm just wondering, I don't see the gaps that you're referring to.
There's a heavy burden on Wayne, Corbett, and our.
Ted.
And Ted.
Jody.
Jody, they're all feeling it.
I mean, maintenance is an area of concern, and that's one of the areas that Craig was really working on quite a bit.
Right, but we're farming that out. And we've already got a plan in place that is involving Brian, and it's involving Chris Jensen, and it's involving, David Stones is also involved. So the maintenance side of it, I would say that that is addressed. I mean, yeah, it's not the same as having someone in-house that can do that maintenance, which was nice, that was a nice perk. But the maintenance is actually, I think that we are poised to have really even improved consistency in that across the entire fleet.
Well, and I think that we need to give it time to make sure that what we've, I mean, he hasn't gone all that long to implement all the new changes. Don't think you just say, oh, it's been a couple of months, we should change it again. I think we should kind of see where it goes.
Well, and believe me, I am all for, if there's a need, nothing's been communicated to me as far as that need. So if you guys are hearing something, it's something I'm not privy to. So if you're hearing something and some of us.
It's not that, it's not that someone's not talking to you and they're talking to us. It's just little comments that are made by people about being overwhelmed. It's just in normal conversation, like, just little side comments about little things.
Yeah, well, that's the nature of working in the city.
Right, and I'm just concerned, like, if something happens to somebody, if somebody gets sick and goes down or isn't able to help. Like, if we lost Wayne, we'd be in a world of hurt. I'm just saying, like, if we lose one of those, we've got, like, you know.
No getting sick.
Two poor people, and if something happens to one of them, we're in big trouble because we're leaning on them very heavily. That's my worry. I want someone else to come in and learn, you know, maybe take some of the burden off of Corbett.
Sustainability and succession.
That's what I want to see.
I think secession's a different conversation than replacing Craig.
Right.
Right, so.
And that's kind of what you're saying, is that in case something happens to somebody, we have anyone in place that's prepared.
That's learning, that's learning about. Like, somebody else needs to know about water.
Right, well, and actually, Ted has been hugely beneficial in that respect. So, I mean, again, the last thing I want to do is burn anybody out, but, you know, we're all adults here, and so if anybody has any concerns, then they communicate them. But I don't want to impose a problem where it may not exist. Yes, Jody?
Okay, this comment may not be appropriate, but I think we all know where the major stress lies, and we'll leave it at that.
When that stress is alleviated, we feel like things will be better.
When the stress that we've all been feeling for the last four or five years is somewhat alleviated, I think we will all have a nice sigh and go, oh, our day-to-day schedule is much less.
Yeah, no, it bleeds the city money and time, for sure. But, I mean, you know, it's not that your comments aren't appreciated. I just, to me, I actually, I mean, I think it's actually working quite well, sort of replacing Craig in the aggregate.
Yeah, I'm worried about burning Ted out, if I'm being honest.
Well, and if Ted is.
Since he's not here, let's.
Stress, yeah.
No, 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 it's not just Ted. I'm worried about Jody. I'm worried, I mean, I can, you can see it in Corbett, like, you can see the toll it's taken, and we're leaning on Wayne heavier. I'm just saying, I'm concerned by.
Wayne volunteered for this. I want to.
Well, Wayne is a masochist, and he needs to stop.
Yeah, he volunteered with some threat.
Arm twisting.
Yeah.
Volunteered.
Well.
I'm just expressing my opinion. I'm concerned about, they're very key to us, and I value them, and I want them to be happy, and I want sustainability. I want somebody else to, you know, to be able to back up. I just feel like if we had even another replacement for, not necessarily Craig, but like Michael, like, just, you know, there was just somebody that's here all the time.
Yeah, well, and, I mean, Zach has done.
But isn't he in school now?
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't a permanent solution.
And that's the thing, I know he would be great, but we need somebody, like, full-time. I'm just saying, I think there needs to be, I'm not trying to spend the money, believe me. I'm like the first to say, let's save the money. But I just, I think we need another person.
Okay. With respect to superintendent, though, so we're all in agreement that we're going to file that on Corbett.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Item two.
So with that, then, all the stuff that Ben was talking about that he was doing as the council liaison to Rhodes on the Public Works, that will be an assistant to all of this that you and Mark were doing is to be an assistant to Corbett in that superintendent role.
Yeah, as liaison to Public Works and as the chairman of the Public Works Committee, I think that was the capacity we were operating.
Okay, just making sure that that's still in place.
Yeah. Yeah, you can't get rid of me that, A.T.
No.
All right, item two, the reuse authorization contract for Payson City. So hopefully, everyone had a chance to review that, and, I don't know. We're not going to vote on it. We still got to have it legally reviewed. Corbett, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it. And as, you know, we sort of, at least preliminarily discussed, I don't know if this is typical, if this is something, because I guess, in summary, you know, I just don't know if we should be requesting, you know, if they're going to take our water, our water, and then presumably repurpose it for some money-making effort, then, I don't know. I mean, is that, should we expect some sort of?
It does seem weird.
It just seems weird to be able to do that.
But, I mean, and so should that be reflected in the rates that we pay? I don't know, I don't know what's typical. And so, Corbett, do you have any insights on that or any thoughts? And so the rates are probably independent of any reuse and. I just want to make sure because I'm not familiar with.
Yeah, I don't know, I can't answer that, but I know Payson's been doing it forever.
Okay, and, I mean, it looks like Elk Ridge, they even still have Elk Ridge in the contract as a typo, but I would assume that similar principles are being asked of Elk Ridge. But anybody have any thoughts on that?
So Craig should know that all of this legally is because of his municipal work, right? So he would know if it was a normal thing or not.
Right.
More than we would.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was mostly wondering if Corbett had any insight on that. For everyone here, it's just a matter of if you have any questions.
Just wouldn't want to lose any water privileges that we currently have. That's the thing, but.
Yeah, well, black water, black water privileges.
I'm sure they'll truck it up here if.
So when we originally started using the Payson system, sewer system, did we sign a contract like this? Is this signing, just reauthorizing? Or, because I don't remember.
I've never seen it.
I don't remember reading this language before when we started using their system, or this is something new?
No, it's not for their system. They, who are they, they're trying to.
But it's with.
The Division of Water Rights, the State of Utah Division of Water Rights.
Right, but it's because of the sewer system.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Did we sign this contract when we signed the original one to have our residents using that facility? I don't remember, so.
I didn't.
Never seen it.
Okay.
Jody would know.
Yep, she said now, so.
All right, well, there's nothing, no other questions or comments on that? Ordinance 2315, amending City Code 132 to add a business days definition. Jody, you want to offer some explanation as to why we're doing this?
This is a no-brainer, that you're closed on Friday?
I think Councilmember Malkovich said it right. We're closed on Friday, so it just specifies what our business days are and allows us to, whether it be building permits, whether it be grandma requests, when they have to be fulfilled in so many business days, it's not making it so our employees have to come into work on Friday to fulfill something so that they aren't meeting state statute. No, inspections say 72 hours from the time that one is requested. It doesn't specify business days, so it's more, the state code says 72 hours.
If it's requested on Thursday at 4:45, you have to have it done before Saturday?
Well, there's another flaw in state code. I'm writing it down.
All right, but for purposes of this, it's just business days.
Yep.
So if we wanted to find business hours in a later council meeting, we can do that, I suppose. But this is just business days. Questions or discussion on that? Okay. City budgetary items, item four. I don't believe there are any, but Chris, in your booming voice, you have anything to offer?
Nothing, no, we don't have any, we don't have anything at this time. Can you hear me okay?
We hear you way too much. They can hear you in Elk Ridge.
Yes. No, there's nothing at this time.
Okay.
No.
Then item five, update on city grants. Carrie, A and B?
Yep, well, I don't know what's happening on the ARPA grant. Last time we talked, we were going to use that money for the face raise three power. I haven't had, other than what we've all heard, I don't know where we're at on that. Thank you for last time approving the committee, and we're just trying to get together to see their schedules compared to Jody's schedule, and when we actually have the space to meet in this building. And so we're coordinating that so we can have our first meeting.
Great, thank you. Ted said he did not, he's not here, obviously. He said he did not have anything. I don't know if he communicated anything to you.
I think the due date on the fire department grant is the 30th of this month, so we're down to the wire on that, and I'm not sure its status, but we need that. Okay, okay, that's the end of this month. I think we're coming up on that. But, yeah, that's the one that helps us do our chipping, so we're really interested in it.
Perfect, okay, all right, thank you. And that would also be waterland replacements, municipal subdivision technical assistance grant, so.
That's the one that you'll, if it hasn't already come through, that's the one to help us because we need to become compliant with the new subdivision rules by December of 2024. So it's going to come through the AOG, through MAG, and with the Legislative Assistant Program. And they're going to then help us, if we need help, updating our ordinances to comply with that subdivision compliance, that new subdivision statute.
Okay, and I haven't seen anything, so I don't know.
So all of this comes through there.
Okay, yeah.
So you'll hear about it first in the MAG meetings.
Okay, well, I have nothing to report on that. All right, item six, city council reports. Councilmember Hilliard?
So we had a board meeting this past Wednesday. We found out that due to some odd accounting due to the economy, it flipped, and the Zions Bank was brokering out the loan that we received for the new transfer station. There was a $5 million shortfall. When it came to the rate increase and the bonuses that came afterwards, and, long story short, we're $5 million short. So in talking with Terry, the director of the transfer station, he says it's not going to affect our rates at all because we have to get the loan just as it's a cash flow problem, not a cash problem. So we have land that we need to sell, but the timing of the sale of the land, and it's already been contracted, so the sale is already finalized, but the transaction for the $5 million that we'll receive for the land will come after we need to use the $5 million to pay for certain aspects of the new transfer station. So we're trying to get a loan that will cover that gap. And so, like I said, it's not a cash problem, it's a cash flow problem. So I pitched actually an idea to the board that potentially other cities, and I made it very clear that we were not one of them, would potentially be able to fund that for us instead of us having to go to a bank. And they're looking at the legality of that because of taxpayer dollars and yada, yada, yada. But it should actually help all taxpayers if, say, Provo or Spanish Fork or Springville could then loan that money to the transfer station for a period of six months, because that's really all that we need. If we go through Zions, then it'll be a little more fees and things, but still not a cash problem, just a cash flow problem. So if you hear anything about that, that's what's going on there. As for the transfer station itself, the new transfer station is currently ahead of schedule. It should be up for ribbon cutting in March, and that'll be a full transfer of all, not just the commercial side, but also residential over to the new transfer station. So things are going very, very well. We just had, took delivery of two of the new compacters, which will drastically help us. Currently, we have two at the new transfer, at the old transfer station. We'll now jump to three because they'll refurbish one of the two that we're currently operating on. Currently, we're able to process about 500 tonne a week for our 100-tonne facility. Our new transfer station will be able to take on about three times our current load, which will give us some growth, and we'll be able to process people through quicker, faster. It'll be more sanitary and safe and lots of things. So things are going very well with the Sullivan District.
Great, excellent, thank you. Councilmember Kimmison?
Yeah, the 911 board meeting is the second Thursday every month, and they hold these without fail. Very interesting conversations. They are currently going through all of their policies. I think I've mentioned this before, and they're making sure they're current and up to par. They recently just reviewed one where what happens if you're a, you work at dispatch and you need to call 911? So there's some tricks, you know, to make that work right. So you got to be able to call that number from anywhere. The other big topic they are speaking a lot about are the issues of transferring 911 calls. The public, no matter where they are, those simple three digits are supposed to automatically route to the correct dispatch center. And many times they fail, and they're trying to eliminate those. The state makes the agency track those, and they get very nasty demerit points for too many of those transfers. So, for example, the other day, a call comes in from Zions Park to our dispatch. Kind of a miss, you know, came up here, and so it takes time and delays to get it to transfer to the correct, to the correct center. So, and so they count those, and they want to make sure none happen that don't have to. They are approved, the agency has approved for 51 employees, and they now have 36. And so they're always short of help. It's a high-stress job. The dispatch center did apply for a grant to have a therapist come in and visit with the employees that work there. It's really helped a lot. They go through a lot of stress, and so that's working really well, and the employees have appreciated that. So, anyway, there's always an opportunity down there. If people are interested in that type of work, they're hiring, and they do the training onsite. So that's pretty much all my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lund?
We did have a board meeting for South Utah Valley Animal Shelter.
We did have a board meeting for South Utah Valley Animal Shelter. They are still, it's everywhere, full to the brim. And it's pretty chaotic. When you go in there, it's just loud and, you know, because they're, they're just to capacity. So they talked about actually building an adoption center and having another building, having one where they bring in all the animals and they keep them until, you know, they're ready to be adoptable. They keep them, they hold them for a good two weeks. And then they, if nobody comes to claim them, they decide if they're adoptable or not, depending on their behavior and their health and things like that. But they're talking about, there's, we looked, actually looked at a piece of property. There's one close by that the county already owns. It would just be, you know, seeing if they could get the county to give that up and building a small building where an adoption center was separate from the actual animal shelter. I guess they're doing that in some other places and so there's a good model for that. She did, Kirsten, the director, said that there was one day, they are having to euthanize adoptable dogs. They always had to do it with cats, but now they're having to euthanize like the dogs now because there's just so many and nobody's adopting them. But she said it's really discouraging because one day, a couple of weeks back, they, they had to euthanize seven dogs. And later that afternoon, fourteen new ones came in.
Oh, shoot.
And this is just how it's going.
Because everybody got a dog during COVID and now they went back to work and they can't.
And, and, but they're not, they're, because they're not allowing surrenders at any of the animal shelters anywhere. So people are just turning them loose in the fields and then the sheriffs are having to bring them all in. They're getting dumped off on people's properties and then the sheriffs are bringing them all in. So. Anyway, I don't think that problem's going to change anytime soon.
Are they thinking of maybe shifting that policy and letting people surrender them instead of just dumping the problem on our sheriffs?
They were more inclined.
Hey Sergeant.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Some of the issues I know that they've had is diseases from animals coming into the shelter. And when that happens, then nobody can, we can't even bring dogs in or cats when that takes place. The other thing, like Janet was saying, they're very full. It's, the shelters were built in, I believe, oh-seven, oh-eight era. And when they built those, we thought, because I was in animal control at the time, we thought, wow, we'll never run out of space. And now they've run out of space, so. Do either big, build bigger shelters or? I know there's quite a few dog rescues out there, but I think they're getting pretty full too.
And they also don't have, if people donate, like dog food, they have, don't have anywhere to stack it, so they end up stacking it in the hallways. So, you know, they're just hoping that if they could maybe do an adoption center. So they were, they were looking at that.
Does anyone know the status of best friends down in Kanab? They never, they never turn dogs away, to my knowledge.
They have a big area, but
Yeah, it's huge.
They're not taking things from all over the whole state. They're.
Yeah, they just take them.
There's articles everywhere. I mean, it's, it's not just Utah or just here. It's, it's every animal shelter in the country pretty much right now is facing the same thing.
Cat passed away last month. She decided she wanted to get a replacement kitten. And the, the adoption center was, you know, the, the animal shelter was closed on Saturdays. We don't have the opportunity to get there during the week. She ended up finding someone who had a free one. Of course, it's not fixed or anything like that, but that's what she ended up doing and it, the adoption was a no-brainer. We wanted to go to the, to the shelter. But it wasn't an option and she was struggling and, and needed that. Is that, I'm guessing it's hard to find people, stuff like that, to keep it open?
They do periodically open it on Saturdays, but unfortunately a lot of the times, they don't have the staff, so.
I was going to ask you that because that was, we, we would have paid to, for the, for the shelter adoption, but it wasn't, wasn't available and they found a barn kitten and.
Yeah, last year about this time, we did Boo something. Remember we did?
Yeah, yeah.
Hal- Halloween or How- How- Howl Ween. Anyway, and we probably should do that again. We did an adoption day on a Saturday and I helped organize it. I should maybe shoot her a text and ask her if we should do that again because there's time to throw one together. They did get quite a few dogs fostered out and adopted out. Most people that foster them do end up adopting them. They just let them take them home for like a trial period, so. Yeah, I know, I could bring that up to them again.
Yeah, it, it was just something I came up with personally.
Okay, yeah.
I think those are helpful because I think people forget that they can adopt.
Well, we've discussed like maybe the first Saturday of the month, every month.
Yeah.
Being open on Saturday or half a day, but I don't think anything.
And talking about the fostering too, I think a lot of people don't understand that they can foster a pet for a short time.
Yeah.
Yeah, create that emotional connection and just make it keep it.
Keep it, right?
Yeah.
That's all.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Malkovich?
Okay. I have a couple of things to say. First, with emergency management, we have this very, you know, every month we have these different exercises we do together as the county. And this time, we had an active shooter drill at the Spanish Fork Hospital. And that we got to participate in and evaluate and I was in the emergency room. And it was a really great exercise and I'm still looking to see if we can maybe just do a tabletop thing here. But we're, we're not quite to that place, but we're, we're getting close. But I just wanted to let you know that was, that was really a great experience to see how it would affect our residents. Because that day that it was planned, the ER was completely full. They did not even have a regular bed open. So when the victims came in, there was no place to put them. And so there was just a lot of, you know, had to have a lot of flexibility in what does the disaster plan look like right now? Law enforcement and EMS and everybody else. And so it was really a good exercise. We talked today at our meeting, Sergeant, I keep thinking that I have to remember not to say deputy. Sergeant, that's in an eye. We're at the emergency management meeting today and we talked about a newer law that went into place called Code Blue Alert. And it's not the Code Blue Alert that law enforcement uses, but it is with regards to the homeless population. If you have a shelter in your community or in your county that says, what this law says is that if it's fifteen degrees or lower, you can expand the bed capacity beyond what it was built for. Now, Utah County does not have a shelter. Salt Lake has two main shelters and two temporary shelters. And St. George has a shelter. But what this impacts for us is out of all of the steps that are there, if you live in a municipality that doesn't have a shelter, you cannot enforce any ordinances that prohibits or abates camping in your city. So if a homeless person wants to camp at your park or somewhere else in the city, that's city property, you cannot enforce that. And they can actually have a fire and keep warm. So this, this, this over, yeah, and because it's fifteen or below, so they don't feel that there's going to be a fire danger. So this is something that is, that went into effect and so I don't know how exactly we will keep an eye on it. The deputy, Sergeant and I didn't feel like there's going to be a big problem in Woodland Hills. Some of the other communities, like Provo has Provo Canyon, Spanish Fork has Spanish Fork Canyon, Basin has Basin Canyon. Those are more susceptible for people to go and, and have tent cities that already exist. But this law, if it's fifteen degrees or colder, you, you, you're, you can enforce those ordinances. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. We don't feel like it's going to be a problem in Woodland Hills.
I feel like our residents would enforce that. We wouldn't have to. Residents would be like, you can't do that, get out of here.
No, I'll be just sitting on Sherry's step looking at the view.
Yeah.
And she'll, she'll, she'll take, take mouth. Taco or something. But I just want you to be aware of those two things with emergency management. I did have something, some residents on Maple Drive contact me and I wanted just to get a feel for this. The developers of the Three Bridges came and met with some of the people on Maple Drive and gave them their map. I did not send it to you, but it's a little map here of their development and told them that Maple Drive would be the, the main access for approximately a hundred homes. And so these residents came to me and said, has that been approved by the council? Does it need to be approved by the council or how is this going to happen? And how does it affect Maple Drive in terms of, of keeping it?
Maintained.
And, you know, because it's a mess right now. They're thinking if it's a hundred homes using that road every single day, that does that other city have to pay anything? And I said, I don't know. So I bring it up to the council and to you because I don't know if you've already had discussions with Three Bridges.
Yeah, we've been in ongoing discussions with them. It's been very high-level sorts of conversations.
Have you discussed Maple Drive then?
They, they had Maple Drive, but I don't recall it being something that was accessed for a hundred homes. They're talking about coming in at the roundabout. And that.
That's what I had told them.
And again, there's, there's nothing that, I mean, all we've done is had a conversation with them anyway, so.
They anticipating Maple Court is that access?
Yes, that's what they, that's what they showed the residents and they gave the residents in that area their map and said, here's the access point and it's going to be for a hundred homers. And I'm sitting there thinking, I said, well, it hasn't come to, to us.
Should they have talked to us first?
Well, they might, that's what I said.
It has to go through the planning commission. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of steps that, I mean, it's so, if, if they're saying that this is, I mean, Larry is usually, the way, I, I mean, I don't know how he pitched it to these residents, but in our conversations with him, he has said, look, we want people to feel like they're partnership. So I don't, I don't know what the nature of these conversations might have been.
Said because their property bites up to an existing road, so the city can't block it.
We've got a member of the planning commission.
Planning commission has volunteered to attend Salem council meetings when they talk about that, their proposal. So they made a large, a rather large proposal through two, three weeks ago to Salem and we have a copy of that. But there's, I mean, their property, part of their property starts at the end of Maple Court. And so there would need to be a lot of improvements done to that to accommodate what they're, what they're talking about. You said normally they would come to the city, make a presentation. This is what they're hoping and would like to do. It's likely that their funds, they would come to support that, to provide funds to us to upgrade or whatever needed to be done. So we hope to keep ourselves more involved, more informed by periodically attending their council meetings where they're making these presentations and stay up to date on that.
Thank you.
But there's no way that they could do what is being proposed here without our approval, right?
That's what I said, but I thought it was very strange that someone would come and give them, the residents, the map and say, this is what we're doing. So Wayne, can you please let us know at our council meeting? So it's on the public record that, and we can advertise then when they're going to be giving the presentation at our planning commission meeting? So that if residents want to attend, they're aware that that's the day that they're giving the presentation.
Sure.
And then that way they can ask their own questions as well. But they, I thought it was a little weird that they're just going door-to-door handing their maps out.
Well, it's a, it's an odd move on their part, but I mean, that was never going to happen. They weren't going to sneak anything past. I mean, it would have required all kinds of public input before any of that could have been done.
That's what I told the residents and, and so I think that they're okay with, with that, knowing that there is going to be a process. But at the time I said, I don't have timetable for that. But I know it wouldn't, we wouldn't just, it wouldn't be just carte blanche. It would be a process of planning commission, public hearings, city council, public hearings. There would be plenty of time for public input. And then we would need to really talk about the maintenance of that road.
Yeah, no, it's a curious move on their part.
So, but I, I still need to, I, I'm sorry, I know you don't like this, but we do have some legislative things that we have to talk about. They just had their interim meetings. We're getting lined up for the legislative session. And there is a lot that is going on with that. A lot of it, it will affect you, Wayne. They're calling it zoning reform. And so these are some of the things that the state is trying to, is proposing, different legislators. One is that the state, it may, these are all may because they're just proposals at this point. There's not necessarily bills written, but they're proposals seeing what is getting traction. State prohibiting zoning for less than two units per acre. So that would affect our entire city. State mandates all types of ADUs as perm, as permitted uses in residential zones. So it could change some of our ADU things. State mandates duplexes, triplexes permitted in all residential zones, which would affect that. State mandates a certain percentage of residential units must include small lots and duplexes. State caps the minimum lot size. So they would, they would say, what is your largest lot size? State assigns minimum base density to every city to plan for. So they would, they would tell you what your minimum density could be and you would have to plan all future development around that. State definitions for residential setbacks, that they would change our setbacks. Streamline regulations for modular homes are really considering a lot of manu, just meant, a lot of manufactured homes right now and what that would tell and I have, what they're planning, what they're looking at doing with the manufactured home idea that every city would have, have to be allowed manufactured homes. And they're proposing that it would still have a local plan review, but a third-party inspection that's certified by the state. Because most, there are a few manufactured home companies in Utah, but most are from out of state, especially Nevada and Wyoming for our markets. And so there are some things going on with that. We still have to comply with the building codes and everything else. But the inspections for things that our local inspections couldn't do would be done by a third-party inspector, knowing what to, to look for.
But just to be clear, these are proposals?
These are proposals that are gaining traction. That's why I said at the beginning, they are not bills. These are proposals that are gaining traction. There's four or five meetings this month to talk about these eleven proposals. And they will start sifting and deciding which ones will rise. I just want you to be aware that these are the thoughts on land use. The other one is a state definition for garage size, that they would set the standard on how big a garage could be. Also, there, yeah, they would.
A maximum?
Uh huh. State infrastructure funding for projects wouldn't really work for us.
Just take away the building for the city.
That's what some people are wanting to do.
Let the state regulate the whole thing.
So there, but that's, so these are things, these are the things that are being proposed that the league is working to mitigate. And that's why, that's why I want to bring them up. The league is working to mitigate and trying to figure out what we can do. But they are, this is one the state thinks is their bone is throwing infrastructure funding for projects like parking garages. And I'm like, no, we're not getting a parking garage, so this one doesn't even matter to us. And then also.
It could be useful down by the mailbox. It's during snow. We could put it underneath the church parking lot.
The other one is to make land use processed faster, so changing, again, changing the subdivision ordinance that they just changed, the SB one seventy-four and House Bill four oh six, to continue to change that for subdivision. So those are just some of the proposals that they're talking about that we are keeping our eye on and that we will adamantly give our voice to. So I just wanted you to know that that's going on with that.
So is the league largely opposed to most of these as well?
Yes, we have, that, that's what we're trying to figure out is exactly how to, because you can't just come in and say no to everything. But you also mitigate, how do you say no and make the right kind of agreement so that it's not hurtful to cities? But the, the House has decided that they will put a pause on all of this stuff, but the Senate has not. And so there's a little bit of stuff going on there. One of the things that I brought up was because they're saying, well, cities are not being compliant with smaller lot sizes. And our zoning is for larger lot sizes, but when we've had development agreements, we've had smaller lot sizes. And so I asked if those would be ever considered because right now it's not considered when you have a development agreement. So they're going to start doing some data analysis to see which cities, like ours, have had development agreements that have some smaller lot. had development agreements that have some smaller lot sizes and still comply with what is being requested. Let's see, what else? They talked a lot about inspection of quality versus an erosion of building code. Are we looking at that they're going to erode the building code to get their way? Or is it, are we really going to be able to keep the quality? And as we approve housing for occupancy, are we going to really be able to tell our residents, this is a sound house? Because it's built on, you know, ordinances and building codes that are sound, and not just they're chipping away at the building code to make it easier for a developer. The one thing that I thought was really good, that could be a possibility, is that they're considering a land use court in the judicial system. So that cities who are having issues with land use would go for a special section of the court system, that a judge, the judges in that court would be very familiar with land use, and they would know if somebody was putting things in multiple times, or burdening the court, or burdening the cities with undue lawsuits. And so that is something that I think might get some traction. So with that, I think...
Any luck with snowplow?
Still working on that, still working on that one. Oh, one thing that we might want to be keeping an eye on is they're bringing back, if you remember from last year, the LIDS and PIDS, L-I-D-S, P-I-D-S. I can't remember what it talks about, but it is basically the idea that a developer can be a taxing authority during their development phase, and the city has no right to say they can't. They can impose a tax and have to pay back things before occupancy, without city approval, without having a truth in taxation, they can just do this. And we've been fighting against it for three or four years now, but it keeps coming back every year. So I'll keep an eye on that one.
Would that be for, like, major subdivisions?
About big developments.
So, I mean, I suppose Summit Creek could...
Might be for infrastructure costs, et cetera, et cetera. That they could impose that tax on the people who build there.
Would it come through the property tax, or would it be more of a fee, or how, what do they think?
It hasn't been determined, but the city doesn't have any say in if they do it or not, non-taxing authority. So that's kind of one that we're focused on. The other one that we are interested in is TUF, the Transportation Utility Fee. Representative Peterson is running that bill. She presented recently to the Taxpayer Association. They are pushing the legislature to have the bill written as a citywide special service district with a specific tax. She and the league are more focused on the user fee concept, that we would, you know, making it doable, that you can have a user fee based on that frontage of your property, and to be able to do road work, constructions, et cetera. But it wouldn't be an easy process, but it's doable. Now, Provo City, I talked to Mayor Kupusi, they've been doing it since 2013, and they have an annual review, they change it up, they, it's not just set in stone. So I figured we could kind of look in, Ben, the Public Works Department could look into how Provo does their Transportation Utility Fee, they've been doing it since 2013, and maybe see what has worked and what hasn't. We, but that is going to be a bill so that other cities can participate in what we've been talking about with having additional resources for roads. And that is it.
Okay.
That was six hours of meetings yesterday.
Thanks for the summary. All right, Councilmember Pratt?
Yeah, we haven't had any meetings, so I don't have anything to report on the South Utah water.
Okay, very good. And then for me, I don't have anything to report on SESD. Trying to think of the content of our last meeting. And then with MAG and COG, the only thing I would say is that I have made some inquiries about the possibility of listing somebody to assist when we're making transportation funding decisions. There's somebody that I actually spoke with, I won't name names, but, because a lot of those votes that we make are, I don't feel like I'm adequately informed in terms of the overall transportation picture, so I thought that getting some assistance in that regard would be beneficial, but other than that, I don't have anything to report. Possible upcoming agenda items? Anybody have anything?
I just need to know, before I put out the next newsletter, do any of you have anything that you would like me to put in? Jody sent me a couple of things. Sergeant is going to send me something. And does anyone else? I know Emergency Management has a couple of things to put in.
Those are coming out very soon.
As soon as I get everybody's stuff, hopefully, maybe tomorrow or the next day, sometime this week. If we don't get it to me till Friday, it might be not till Monday. So, but do any of you have anything that you would like?
Probably some thank yous for what we have. Especially for our chairs, all the hard work that they did.
Yeah, and Kenner and some of the others.
Yep, and I think to our fire department too, because they carried a big chunk of that burden, so. And they always are willing to do whatever I ask, whatever I ask for help. They're really good to help, so I think include the fire department on the thank yous.
You mentioned Janet, she was involved for hours and hours.
I'm okay, that's what I got booked in to do. I, we've been really fortunate the last two years, I've had some really good committee people helping me, and I've been really lucky, so hopefully I get two more years of good people. Makes my life a lot easier.
All right, we'll have no other items or agenda items, then we'll adjourn the work session and reconvene at 7:05. All right, we will call the City Council meeting to order. So Councilmember Kinniston, if you would offer the invocation, and Councilmember Hilliard, if you would lead us in the pledge.
Father Naman, we are grateful this evening to meet in the city of Willen Hills. We're thankful for the surrounding mountains that we enjoy. We're thankful for the citizens that live here. We are grateful for all those in our city that serve to make this a better place, and we ask thy blessings upon each of them. We ask thee to help us make good decisions and to do that which would be best for our city in the long run and in the short run. Are grateful to have this opportunity to serve with each other. We ask thy blessings in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Everybody rise? I repeat, pledge allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you to both of you. Okay, so we will now open the public comment portion of our meeting. So if we have anybody here that cares to make a public comment, now is your time. Sherry, please come on up.
Mine's more informative than it is comment. I let the city know that the Activity Days girls and I and another leader are going to go down to the bottom of Eagle's Nest, the west side, and pick up all the trash. So I'm the one that filled up one of your trashcans out here, which is what I was asked to do, and threw a few things in the dumpster, like a cushion and whatnot. And I also found the sign that says, no parking after dark, that was way back in the woods. So if Corbett gets approved, is he the one that I let know that the sign was down and it could be put back up?
It is on his list, yes.
Okay, well, it's, it's down there, and it's still on the pole. I'm not quite sure how they got it out, but I didn't see it.
They just ran it over and dumped it down.
Where is it? So it's at Eagle's Nest?
I dragged it out.
Or is it here at the building?
No, it's, it's against the fire hydrant.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
It was heavy, so just reporting that we did that, and it looks lovely.
Thank you for doing that.
Good job.
Yeah, no, that's awesome.
Picked up quite a bit, it looks like, yep.
Anybody else here?
I would like to request the city revisit a policy in regards to roosters. I would like to know if there's a way we can mitigate that issue that is concerning some residents, because I've already experimented with it and had success in taming the rooster noise.
So you're pro-rooster?
I'm pro-rooster, like I was last time. But...
He's coming with a solution, though, not just a complaint.
Yes, I'm coming with a tried and true solution, which worked great until somebody's dogs, I think it was two dogs, came into my yard and killed all my chickens.
Again?
No, it happened at the end of the snow period. So I've got chickens growing again, but not many roosters yet, but I do want to get some, and I want to do it with you guys' permissions. Okay?
Okay, thank you. No, that's a, that's a fair point.
Can you tell us what the solution was? So that if we change our policy, we would know what solution is?
Yeah, it costs us, it costs us about 50 cents, maybe less. It was a little Velcro collar that we put on the rooster's neck. You make it large enough so that your finger can fit underneath it, so it can still eat and breathe without a problem, but as soon as he cocks his neck up and starts to, you know, to cockle, that's all you got. And then he gave up after a while.
Okay.
Could you do the same thing with dogs?
I don't think so, I don't think their throats work the same way.
Yeah, there are shock collars that I've heard.
Dogs are...
They get used to those shock collars.
...cooler than roosters are.
Had a bad day?
I also want to plant a seed about the revisiting the idea of the size of allowable fenced-in garden within your lot. I mentioned this last year, that once I started billing enough people in my group that we could actually have some people, you know, working on the idea of what would be an appropriate size garden to be fenced in the yard without restricting wildlife, you know, that's, I think that was the main purpose, wasn't it? To have a 200-square-foot garden.
Per my understanding of the current fencing ordinance, you actually don't have a restriction? There's only a restriction on at what point you need a permit?
Okay, fair enough.
Is that true, Wayne? I thought it was just 200 for a garden.
No, no, you can get a bigger garden than that.
I thought Wayne put a policy together that we could get a permit, but I didn't know.
There is a limit on the size, however, with many things, there's a workaround. There's nothing says you can't have two gardens, or three gardens, you've got enough property, and each one of those gardens could have a fence, so...
I just want to propose something fairer than 200 square feet.
Well, if you have two gardens, that's 400 square feet.
That's still not big.
But that's a lot of fencing, isn't it? I mean, that's, that would be more than if you just had a bigger garden.
Well, and Aaron, certainly, I encourage your ideas to be considered, so I would say that as a practical matter, as, I would say, if you haven't already got a City Council member, kind of, with whom you are having these conversations, I mean, we can have it part of our agenda.
I'm actually thinking about a percentage of the lot size, instead of a specific square footage.
I would agree with that.
I think that's more reasonable.
So along that line, that's kind of what I'm thinking.
I think it's, again, trying to limit it, it's based on the lot size and the setbacks and other things, so it should comply with that, not a certain...
And useable sunshine.
Yeah.
Of course, if the state takes away our ability to even zone, then it doesn't matter. But the state did give us permission to collect rainwater, so it'd be nice to be able to...
They did change that law.
It would be nice to combine that with a reasonable-sized garden that you could actually water with your rain, you could actually take care of it.
It used to be illegal to capture rainwater.
Yes, now you can, you can now store up to 2,500 gallons, and the permit's free.
Ben?
So here in section...
Put that in the newsletter.
10.1, 10.11.8B1J, says fencing around a small group of trees, garden, or landscape feature not exceeding 200 square feet is not required to comply with the height or material limitation of the section. It is limited, however, to a fence no taller than eight feet in height, and is restricted from using barbed wire, razor wire, or any other similar style. Also, the 200-square-foot limitation can be waived by the Planning Commission site reviewers, given good cause to do so.
Okay, well, so, and we can't debate it here tonight, but I would say, let's, if you want to get it on the agenda, perhaps Ben would be your guy to have that kind of proposal put together, and then we can discuss it.
And then for your information, Doral, especially Doral, this coming October 2nd, it's the first Tuesday of the month, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but our topic is how to collect rainwater on your property. So we are going to put that in the newsletter, that everybody who's interested in being able to do that, come that night, and we'll teach you what the laws are, how to register for the permit, and then what kind of equipment and tools you can do, and do it yourself.
That's the third.
It's not rocket science, so it's the third.
It's Tuesday, the third.
Okay. That's what Spencer just informed us of too. Okay, thanks, Aaron.
Okay.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? And it's just Chris online, right, Jody? Okay, well, if nothing further, then we will close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to item 12, the consent agenda. City Council meeting minutes, August 22, 2023. We could get a motion to approve those?
I move we approve those.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Kinniston?
Second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Hilliard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't hear you say aye, so, okay. That motion carries. Item 13, Resolution 2023-21, appointing an individual to serve... I'm sorry?
It should be 31.
Oh, 31, okay, thank you for that. Appointing an individual to serve as the Street Superintendent for the city of Willen Hills, Corbett.
I make the motion that we appoint Corbett to serve as the Street Superintendent for the city of Willen.
Okay, that's a motion by Councilmember Malkovich.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Hilliard, all in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. Item 14, Ordinance 2023-15, amending City Code 132, adding a business days definition.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Lunt.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Pratt. Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinniston?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Yes.
That motion carries. Item 15, there were no large purchases expenditures needing approval. And closed session, I would recommend that we enter a closed session to discuss pending litigation, if someone would make a motion.
I will make that motion if we enter closed session.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Pratt?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Malkovich. Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinniston?
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt?
Yep.
Okay, we are in closed session, so those are...
I'm impressed with how much you've gone above and beyond with that.
Can I have five minutes of you?
Yes, you bet. Okay, yeah.
I need to take some first before you do the...
Okay, so, can we, a motion to adjourn? Okay, a motion by Councilmember Kinniston?
I second it.
Seconded. All in favor? You guys?
Take care, thanks, Chris.
Bye.
Bye, Chris.